I'm just not seeing a feed on the website yet, Shaylee, I'm not sure.
So it usually is the delay on that side, but on the Riverdale City page, it's showing that I'm live and I can see myself on it.
I could always go to the city page, does it stream from that page as well?
It should, yeah, the one that I'm on is, let's see, Channel Content YouTube Studio, I can't talk, sorry.
Oh yep, there it is. I can see myself talking. That means at 8:00 AM we're ready to start, I think.
Okay, um, welcome everybody, I see that for our April 14th, um, work session, we have, it looks like we have a new, a new, new commissioner?
Yeah, actually, I was gonna ask you if you'd, if you'd like to maybe introduce them and Kent, if you'd like to say a few words and introduce yourself to the group, that'd be great.
Sure, um, Kent Anderson, I was born and raised in Riverdale, lived here all but about two years of my life, and love the city, um, my wife thinks I'm crazy, but every time she, every time we come back to Riverdale, in the summertime and the windows are down, I just take a deep breath and I say, "We're home," I can smell it. So, uh, just love the city, uh, love the people, so looking forward to having an opportunity to give back, thank you.
Nice, thank you Kent, welcome aboard. So I show all commissioners are present, and do we have any public comment?
I don't, oh, sorry.
Am I on the right one?
No, you wouldn't have a public comment because it's a work session.
I know, it's, the work session has public comments, sorry.
Yeah, just go ahead and skip it and go to presentations and reports.
Presentations and reports, um, consent items, consideration of meeting minutes for March 24th, the work session and regular meeting session, anybody have any, any com, anybody have any comments? Wanda, this is where you turn your microphone on.
Do we keep them on, or do we only use them when we have something to say?
She has something to say about the meeting minutes for March 24th. We can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? I happen to see a typographical error on the city minutes, and she said this is what I'm supposed to tell Shaylee that there's an error. It is on, uh, 1B, down where the motion is, the second line in, I think it's the second line in, it says, uh, or the third line, it says, "Understanding that the application resolved, understanding city is spelled wrong." C-I-T-S-Y, take this 6 out. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, consideration to approve the minutes?
I think that if they don't have any other comments, do you want me to go back and do any presentations and reports briefly, or do you want me to just jump in since we're kind of running late?
You can jump in.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and look really quickly at Agenda Item 1 on your action items, which is the Old Mill subdivision, final subdivision site plan and plot, it's a recommendation to City Council, obviously where it was provided preliminary approval from the planning commission during their last meeting, I'm going to just quickly run through the executive summary on this. Old Mill Partners is the applicant on that, they will be represented tonight likely by Hugh Park, maybe Lori Thurgood, but for sure Hugh. Uh, as you remember from last time, it's just a traditional R-1-8 zone, single-family residential subdivision. The address is approximately 4225 South 700 West, it would create a new 4225 South Street, and a cul-de-sac subdivision. Um, public hearing is not required, and it was reviewed by your body on March 24th, 2020. Uh, with an understanding to resolve staff concerns and engineering concerns as much as possible. That being said, you have a few options tonight, clearly you can make a recommendation to City Council for approval, you can make a recommendation to City Council with any, recognized or additional requirements, criteria for such a recommendation, you can table it if you feel like that there, there's not enough items to address, and have it come back in two weeks, or you can obviously recommend no support of it to the City Council, let them weigh in on that. All things you do, make sure you have appropriate findings of facts to do that, if it were to receive a recommendation for approval, it would be updated, the plot would, site plan and plot would be updated with any comments or ideas that you see are, are needed to be fixed, and then sent to City Council for their approval and consideration, based on whatever your motion is that you made tonight. The property is under the name of the ownership of Old Mill Partners, as, as many of you remember, this was previously decided to be a potential, uh, religious property location, and it has sat as a vacant property the majority of time on 700 West. Um, that being said, staff has provided comments, which I, I won't go into detail for the work session for the sake of time, but clearly there, there are a few comments that I want to hit on and share with the group. Uh, the general plan for the site is set as institutional, and clearly if this was to be approved as a subdivision, we would change that or our next available, um, update on the master land use plan and the general plan, they have it reflect residential load density, but everything around the site is residential load density, so this use very much conforms to the land use master plan of surrounding properties. For the sake of time, just kind of feel free to scan through some of the comments, if you see anything you got in my comments, and then following mine, there's the departmental staff comments from Mr. Douglas, our Public Works Director, our Police Chief Scott Brinkman, our Fire Chief Jared Shawley, uh, there is some, I should probably hit this point, because there's some, some staff conflict, which is rare, but it does happen, in, in opinions relative to the fire hydrants placement, which is kind of a unique situation in this one with the mini cul-de-sac. Uh, I've got the, um, let's see if I can find it, I've got the, the Public Works Director saying that he wants a fire hydrant to be located at the end of cul-de-sac under Comment 3 underwater, and the reason for that is he likes to have a flush site where it's the end of the line, and if, if he has a dead-end line, then he's gotta have some kind of a flush pumper system, fire hydrants tend to accomplish that go very readily and easily. That being said, if you look down and you look at what the fire, the fire marshal and the fire chief have said, the fire chief says in his email dated, uh, April 2nd, it would be ideal to have the hydrant in, at the end, opening to the intersection of the cul-de-sac. Does that current hydrant meet the distance requirements of current location, the hydrant needs to be at the opening of the subdivision, it would be challenging to hook the hydrant, make the turn into the subdivision. And then the fire chief, or excuse me, the fire marshal says, "I agree with the chief, it should be at the opening of the subdivision." Since that time, uh, I contacted the Public Works Director to bring that to his attention, and asked him to talk with the fire chief and say, "Hey, what's the deal here, what would be best?" because I know what the, both parties are trying to do. And I got an updated email dated April 9th, 3rd April 9th, at 9:30 at night approximately, where the fire chief says, "I still prefer having a hydrant going into the subdivision, but if Sean needs it as a cleanout, I can work with that, as long as do we still have one close to the entrance up, up top," which they do, there is one, if you look on the drawing, it's on the north end of 700 West where their subdivision starts, there's one evidencing an existing location. So that existing location could easily provide support for water services in the event of a fire through the mouth of the subdivision. So I think that's what he's recognizing with his comment, that's what it seems like. But this fire hydrant, that being said, for the applicant's sake, it's kind of been floating through the subdivision as we've gone. Originally it was at the end, then the fire department said what they said, and now Sean wants it at the end, so I give you a back and forth on that, because that has some, some application on what's going on here. But from what I can tell, the fire chief seems to be okay with it being at the end of the subdivision, or the end of the cul-de-sac for a flush point, if that's what the Public Works Director wants to do, it's not his favorite beginning with it, so, long story short, that's what's going on there. Um, you'll then see quite a bit of information from the engineer, he has about three and a half to four pages of comments. I'll try to get key comments, if you see anything in particular you have a question about, and probably not can hit them all, um, but if you see anything in particular you want to ask about, please let me know, and we'll, we'll look into that or talk about it further. And then following that, you have the, the application and the fee, and then you have some response commentary from the engineering group that did the drawing, I can show their responses to it, and then finally you actually have the, the subdivision, oh, excuse me, have a document, a letter from the applicants regarding the water table, and admitting or agreeing to having slab-on-grade houses or crawl spaces, um, which would include even the idea of a day basement maybe, but obviously there won't be any some grade basements, because the water table is pretty high in this area, this stuff is 700 West. And then you have the subdivision in the site plan document, so that's, that's pretty much the, the quick and, I guess, comprehensive discussion of that one for now, and if there are any other questions, I turn it back over to the planning commission to let me know.
Okay, thank you Mike, um, did we want to go through Action Item Number 2?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure if any of you had comments on the first one, questions, guidance, or anything like that, you have the option to do that with, with Old Mill still having some challenges reflected in staff reports, so if you're ready, I will move on.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is the subdivision an HOA?
It will not be a required HOA from the city, but the applicants have said that they've considered making it an HOA, because it does have a storm drain area that will be maintained by the subdivision. And so the only way for them to responsibly do that would be for them to consider having an HOA. So my understanding is the applicants are considering that as an option, but the city does not require it for the subdivision.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, I'll move on then to Item 2, Item 2 in your packet is the, um, consideration of an amended small subdivision plot for Riverdale Center 5 subdivision. The location of the property is approximately 4035 to 4079 South Riverdale Road, uh, it's the commercial center, um, where Olive Garden, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and the buildings to the northeast of RC Bully, there's like, I think, an Audible, a Segal Book, and, uh, there's a, a workforce services group, staffing services group in there, et cetera, so they're over there. Um, anyway, it's a five lot subdivision of existing lots, you had two lots, they're now gonna subdivide those two lots into five lots. So we're effectively getting a small subdivision amendment due to existing lots that are under new ownership. The owner group is CCA, they're also known as Corn Loss Group, um, the applicants for that are, uh, they're Anderson Walling and Associates Inc., who are the engineering survey subdivision drawing group. They're represented by David Hamilton, who went through a lot of the work, and Jake Tate, who will likely be representing their interest on tonight's meeting. Uh, this is in a regional commercial C3 zone. The site is before you, because it is a small subdivision, we're not doing any new roads. Technically, this is, is an approval of the small subdivision from the planning commission, and then a recommendation to City Council. So if that makes sense, so you can approve it, and then as part of your approval, you can make a motion to then recommend an action to City Council, approval with modifications, curatives, et cetera, or you cannot approve it and not recommend it, those are your options, you can table if you feel like that's required as well. I should receive final approval from you as this body, and you make recommendations to City Council, it would go to City Council in the next practical and available, uh, meeting. Our current, this property is currently listed under the ownership of Riverdale Center North LLC. Uh, as I stated, there's already existing parcels and buildings, see, they recently acquired this property from the Boyer Group, that's new information, you may not be aware of, and I do have staff summaries reflecting that, the general plan used for this area is size planned commercial high, the subdivision is neutral, right, it's already existing, it's planned commercial high, so it's just creating more lot options for the developer slash owners of these properties. You then have, again, my comments, which I don't have too many on this one. Not really much from staff, the only thing that Mr. Douglas says is, he says, "My only concern with these is the applicant ensures that current and future owners are legally bound to maintain the utilities in the subdivision, including water sewer and stormwater," which they've reflected in a title report we have, I haven't provided to you, because it's a lot, it's a pretty big document with a lot of property information, but they do have a title reflecting that, you're certainly welcome to ask the applicants about their strategy for that, he may have done so, he's told me over the phone what their strategy is to maintain that, so it's all shared responsibility with them, so dividing, the concern clearly is if they subdivide, you now have two lots going into five lots, they could sell any one of those lots off, right, parcel them off to different property owners, then who's responsible for the shared utility services or, or drainage services, et cetera, and there is Birch Creek, which runs behind Segal Book and Audible in that building, and that is a shared, um, storm drain area, and that needs to be maintained, because in the past we've had it blocked, and it's actually blown a couple of times in the past, when it gets a lot of water in there, because it's a lot of water that feeds off of the terrorists in South Ogden City, rushing down that pipe in really wet situations, if that pipe is not maintained by these property owners, then it can blow the pipe. So that's something that Sean's concerned about, they, they say all the right things, but I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's what his concern is reflecting. Um, there's one other comment from our building official, which very infrequently, we, we don't see a lot from him, so it is interesting to have a comment, he says, "Mike, if they changed the lot line between Lot 1 and Lot 5," which is between, I think it's Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Building, and then the adjacent smaller retail buildings, "they would need to provide a two-hour wall, a firewall on both buildings and separate the utilities." And that's from Jeff Woody, our building official, he did talk to them over the phone, but I'm not quite sure if any resolution has been made on either side, he didn't seem, really excited about the conversation being a resolution of his concern, so we'll, we'll see what the applicants might say about that. And you have Mr. Nelson's comments in the packet, and then their application, and then their, uh, supporting documentation for that, so that, that's it for that one, do you want me to, do you have any questions, or in sake of time, do you want me to speed through the last one?
I have one real quick question.
Sure.
Is this one going, is, is a preliminary or a final?
It's, oh, it's, it's a, it's a final, because it's a small subdivision, it technically only needs one review at the planning commission, and they can go to City Council, so you'd make, you can make a motion to approve, and then obviously get approval with the planning commission, and then make a recommendation to City Council, it's kind of a two-part motion, if you will. And those parts can be any combination of what you think is appropriate as a motion.
Okay, is the next one that you're going to be doing, is that going to be a final also then?
Exact same way, yes, yep, and, and kind of segueing into that, the next one is again, an amended small subdivision plot approval of Riverdale Center 2, Lot 3, amended subdivision, that's the title of it. Uh, it's located approximately 4125 South Riverdale, uh, Road, Riverdale, Utah, it's the, that address specifically is the Old Navy Michaels Building, um, but, uh, that's where that one's at. Again, same applicant, it's CCA, Corn and Watcher Group, represented by AWA. Um, all the same information on the last one, so I won't really go through that, again, you make an approval tonight and an emotion of recommendation to the City Council, and now requirements, criteria, you cannot approve it, again, should you make a recommendation, it will be taken to City Council in the next available meeting for their consideration of approval. The owner again is Riverdale Center North LLC, um, and again, right now, this one's one large parcel with three different buildings on it, those, each buildings would be on their own lots with this subdivision, so we're going for a 1 to 3 subdivision request. General plan for this area is planned commercial high, the only other difference with this area is it's zoned differently, this area is zoned as retail, commercial park overlay zone, which means there's a development agreement that was established with Boyer. This does not violate that agreement, but just know that there is a, a different master agreement in place for this site, as part of the Lowe's Development Project when that came in. And you have my review comments, I can review it when we get to the main meeting. This one, same comments from Mr. Douglas, but otherwise no other staff concerns that I could see. That's one looks really good, from that perspective, and then you have some engineering comments relative to the plot drawing itself, their application, their pavement, and then the, the actual drawing, so that's everything I have on that one, uh, I defer back to the planning commissioners if you have any questions for me, and otherwise it looks like we're getting ready to go to our next meeting.
Okay, thank you Mike, anybody have any questions, comments? Any discretionary items? Motion to adjourn?
The motion on this just goes straight to the regular meeting?
I'm gonna unmute.
Second. Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's, uh, head on into, into our planning commission meeting.
Just a heads up, Rick, I unmuted you, just someone had a huge white box up the way, so just a heads up, you're unmuted already.
Me?
Rick, sorry.
And Shaylee, what I wanted to let you know is maybe you can give guidance, we have a few new people jumping on, just to remind them of how the microphones work, so that we don't get them the feedback.
Yes, perfect, so everyone that's on, if I have a bunch of microphones on at the same time, it echoes, and then I can't hear anything, the recorder can't pick it up, and then we're gonna have some problems. So if, if you are not speaking, if you could just mute your microphone, anytime I'm taking a roll call, or if you have questions, or anything like that, go ahead and unmute it, but as soon as you're done talking, just go ahead and mute it again, and then we are also being broadcasted on YouTube, so just be aware of that.
Thank you Shaylee. We'd like to welcome everybody to our planning commission meeting, April 14th, 6:30. Uh, I show all commissioners are present, welcome everybody to our meeting, do we have any public comment?
I don't have any texts.
I also don't have any emails, and there's no comments on the YouTube right now.
Okay. We'll check it, we'll double-check at the end of our meeting to make sure if any comments have come in. Presentation and reports. Consideration of meeting minutes for March 24th, 2020, the work session.
Amy, do you want me to go ahead and give a quick presentations and reports of what's going on, like we normally do?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I just want, the biggest thing I wanted to let everybody know is Quick Crack Car Wash has, uh, passed their final inspection, and they have their business license approved. So we expect them to be opening for business very soon, I'm not sure if they'll do, obviously they'll do soft up opening, but I'm not sure when that will be made available, so you might just have to drive by and watch, and if you see cars going through, it's open for business. Um, but that's, that's the new thing that's open, uh, the other thing is Scandinavian Designs, that furniture place over by Zirchers is back on, they, they came and got their building permit, uh, I think they're either first of this week or late last week, that permit was reissued for them, so that will mean move forward again. This will be a third go, so hopefully this one is the one that actually happens, and they get it built and go from there. Um, other than that, I do have a small, uh, two lot subdivision that came in today for the, um, property south of the golf course along South Weaver Drive, it's another family member of that family that wanted to build a residential lot, and I will be bringing that forward to you in two weeks for the next planning commission meeting, so that will also be viewed as a small subdivision, so potentially it could go one time to the planning mission, go to City Council, but if there's enough issues like it, things in the past, you could do an approval, and then not make a recommendation to City Council if it, it needs more time. So that is an option, we can bring it back to that point, so, um, other than that, that's, that's the only other thing I'd note, there was a, there's a home up on, uh, Ritter Drive, that's since been downloaded and removed, so as part of that Ritter Drive project, that's to accommodate the widening of Ritter Drive, which is going forward. So don't be in complete shock when you see it looking very different up there than it does now, that, that home gone, uh, our understanding, the home was pretty unsafe anyway, probably shouldn't be have been lived in, so it was probably good news for everybody to help that family relocate, so we could put that road in, because it, it sounds like it wasn't the safest home anyway. So, that being said, uh, that's everything going on, and defer to the planning commission at this point, thank you.
Thank you Mike, sorry about that. So consent items, consideration of meeting minutes for March 24th, 2020, the work session and regular meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the consent items?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, let's head to our action items, consideration of, of a recommendation to City Council for final subdivision site plan and plot approval of Old Mill subdivision property located approximately 4225 South 700 West, Riverdale, Utah, requested by Old Mill Partners, Mike?
Thank you, and I'm gonna steal your guys' screen, this is probably a little easier, uh, if I do this, uh, then I can just show you the packet and make it publicly visible, and then I hold the subdivision plots if warranted, so I, hopefully you're okay with me doing that, but here goes, let's see how this works. Hopefully you're seeing that all okay. And I'll try to just go through the items as I see them, and you can follow along with me, um, if you see anything in particular, if you want to stop, follow along, let me know. But yeah, the applicant for this one is Old Mill Partners LLC, the representation today is Hugh Park, I did see that he has joined us, so he's available for questions or, or comments. He's applied for the, well, he and Lori Thurgood, as, as co-partners in the group, have applied for a traditional subdivision site plan and plot review for Old Mill Post Development, located approximately 4225 South 700 West, the zoning is single-family residential R-1-8 zone, which is 8,000 square foot minimum lots, it's an 11 lot subdivision. Um, it doesn't require a, a public hearing element for the subdivision, and it's before this body for final review and approval of the plan and plot, uh, as far as a recommendation to, I shouldn't say approval, that's probably wrong, should be review and recommendation to City Council. Uh, it came before the planning commission on March 24th, 2020, wherein the planning commission provided it with a preliminary approval with the understanding to resolve staff concerns and engineering concerns, part of that. Uh, following the review of this presentation and discussion, the planning commission can opt to make a recommendation of City Council approval of the plan and plot, uh, impose additional requirements as part of that recommendation, table no matter if it's warranted, or recommend no support for, uh, approval, again, with appropriate findings of fact for that decision. Following the conclusion of the action, this would be, uh, set forward to the City Council with whatever recommendation was made by the planning commission for City Council consideration in the future meeting. Down a little bit. The petitioner's properties are listed under the ownership of Old Mill Partners, this property has sat vacant, some could argue maybe even agriculture, I don't know how much agriculture went on on it, but, uh, it had some potentials of future religious assembly location, and Old Mill Partners Group recently acquired the property from the previous owners. The general plan used for it is listed as institutional due to the previous plan for that property, but the properties all around it are listed in the land use, master plan is residential load density, this property, should it be subdivided, we would just update to be residential load density in a future general plan and land use, um, update. Rolling down, uh, I'm gonna review my scrolling down, I'm gonna review my comments, the few I have. I did note, just, just so everybody knows that on the applicant's side that this will need to be done as part of the final plat, which it always has done. But the surveyor's still on signature not shown yet and I put this is anticipated. The adjacent tract ownership and tax identification numbers, it's not shown on the site plan, but it is showing on the plat. It'd be helpful to be on the site document as well. In the, excuse me, in the report from the applicant or the report from the engineer group that is helping the applicant, they noted that they added it on the site plan, but it's not showing. So I don't know if maybe they added a layer and then it didn't show up when they printed. I'm not sure. On existing easements, I just put no existing easements identified, if any exist. I don't think there are any. The only question I had is there is some power utility lines through there and it made me a little nervous that there might be some easements there that we aren't seeing. So I just wanted to make sure that there are any power line easements relative to the power company's use there. Scrolling down to page, see if there's anything here. They haven't provided us a lot of details about the sizes of the structures, but again, they're traditional homes. I just put if you want any more details about plan structures, you can inquire for more. We do have, obviously I put in there just the standards and the requirements of R18. I did say no landscaping plan shown or provided. We've since received the landscaping plan from the applicants yesterday, which I've... Oh no, I'm lying, it's on a different subdivision. Sorry, it's on Penunzio Farms. But we did receive that for Penunzio finally, so my apologies. I'm getting the two mixed up. See, scrolling down to page six, I talked about the fire. Fire hydrant concern in the work session, I'll note it again since Hugh is now on. There's some discrepancy here between the fire chief and the public works director. I'll get to that in just a second when I get to the staff notes. And then the water right transfer documentation. Applicant needs to show proof of transfer to the public works director. If I can get the public works director to say he's good, or I guess if he doesn't comment on the future review, I'll take that comment off. I just want to make sure he has the water transfers that he needs for this development. And I'm sure Hugh could talk to that as well when we turn it over to him. Finally, on my report, I noticed that there are multiple times on the response sheet from the engineering group, the sheet C200. And I looked for it and it looked like it wanted to be there because I think there's C, C100 and a C300, but I couldn't find it. So I don't know if that's something that can be provided or if it's something that was important to be provided that's missing. But I just wanted to challenge, you know, the supposition of it existing and where is it for the purposes of this. Moving on, this is Mr. Douglas's comments here. He notes that stormwater, that they do a drainage system, long-term operation and maintenance plan for the BNP's approved and recorded plat. You get the notice of intent filed with the state for the water. The detention basin design and materials will need to be shown. The bottom of the basin, this location should be a type of prevent damage from standing water and all cash basins shall be the hooded type. Under streets, you can see it says street signs, locations, and types shall be shown on the plans. Asphalt repair and sunburner west should be a chip seal, not a seal coat. Riverdale City asphalt mix should be noted on plans. That is important to show and we have a certain batch that works really well for our road. So, so we do need that note. Backflow preventer location, size and type for detention basin shown proposed irrigation sprinkling system plan. I would imagine there'll be a similar plan developed that was developed for Penunzio on this one. And then you can see here a comment from him that says a fire hydrant will need to be located at the end of the cul-de-sac and then through laterals need to be connected in front of the manhole. And then a note requiring all missing non-rotating or damaged surface improvements to be replaced, which you'll see a similar comment from the city engineer. With that fire hydrant request to be located at the end of the cul-de-sac, we'll scroll down here to the fire chief and the fire marshal and their comments. Fire chief says, Randy, who's the fire marshal, he's giving kind of his feedback. It would be ideal to have the hydrant at the end, opening to the intersection of the cul-de-sac. Does that current hydrant meet the distance and requirements at its current location? The hydrant needs to be at the opening into the subdivision. It would be challenging to hook the hydrant and make the turn into the subdivision. And then Randy Covert says, I agree with the chief. It should be at the opening of subdivision. I, I brought that issue up to the public works director, said and discussed it with him. His concern is for flushing purposes, that water stagnates at the end of a line and it's good to have an annual flush of that line, especially in cul-de-sacs. And we've always had a fire hydrant at the end of cul-de-sacs. Very unlikely or rare that we don't. From a fire department's perspective, they feel like it's safer and more quick to hook a hydrant at the beginning of the, the cul-de-sac. And so that's where they created a little bit of the challenge. Now, there is an existing fire hydrant on the north end of the subdivision, kind of the, the northern perimeter where the subdivision starts along 700 West. It's existing, that could be hooked for the opening if they're trying to get speed. But clearly you can't galley to the end of the cul-de-sac in that situation. So that's where the, the concern is. So I, I brought it to the attention of the fire marshal and the fire chief thereafter. I don't know if he talked to Sean, he did CC him on an email I received and it, it was dated at April 9th, about 9:30 at night. It says, I still prefer having a hydrant going into the subdivision, but if Sean needs it as a cleanup, I can work with that as long as we still have one close to the entrance up top. And then it says Jared. So there's still a little bit of concern there. What is best? I'm not sure if the fire, I, I can't speak for the fire marshal as far as the location of that existing one up around the bend. If that would satisfy his concerns, he hasn't weighed in since the fire chief weighed in. But that's, that's about as much feedback as I have. So I'll, I'll leave that with, with you guys and as a, as a planning commission to, you know, so you think, I think it sounds like he's okay with it. It's location being at the end of the cul-de-sac, but we'll just have to make sure and work with the goer that adequate fire services provided there at the top and, and the speed that they desire. So I think I've said enough about that one. And otherwise, the fire or the police chief and the city administrator don't have any concerns regarding the subdivision submission. Now, the last thing I want to cover is the city engineer's comments. I talked to him on the phone and he said he was just concerned about, excuse me, about the amount of, of challenges or concerns that he ran into reviewing this plat and would hope that the applicant's engineer group takes his comments seriously and resolves them. He says that they're pretty, they're pretty simple things, but there is quite a list of them. So it looks, it looks heavy and weighty, but if they, if they do and follow this as a roadmap to resolve these issues, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. That being said, I mean, you can see simple ones, I won't read them all, but the current date of subdivision must be placed on their subdivision title off the drawing. I mean, that's a simple edit. And I, and I think the majority of them are like that throughout here. Just little notes that, that maybe go on or, or show. Not sure what item 10 is in light of all the fire hydrant discussion, where he says to remove it from the drawing. I'm not sure what his reason for that is, but I'm sure that he and the engineer group could talk about that. Now, one thing he did bring up relative to this subdivision and its allowance to be a 30-foot wide roadway with it only servicing 10 homes. He did still say the bulb at the end per fire regulations and requirements needs to be a 55-foot radius. That's a little bit beyond my expertise, so I trust that he knows what he's talking about. So that's something that the applicant and the applicant's engineer will need to adjust as far as the lot sizes for that area in the back where the turn radius is at the end of the cul-de-sac. Otherwise, there's a few other comments there. Again, if you see anything in particular that jumps out at you, be sure to let me know here in a minute when I, I complete this. Going down to his, his third page, says the geotechnical report will need to be followed in regards to all recommendations. The proposed roadway pavement thickness for 4225 South Street needs to be placed on the improvement drawings with placement and compaction requirement. So typically you'll see a cross section that shows that standard, what it looks like. And he said he can't find it. So again, is that on the other sheet? Is that something that can be easily added? I'm sure it could. Many notes on drawing sheet C400, the following corrections additional design must be considered. Again, talking about a bunch of road design challenges and concerns he's seeing. And he wants a fire hydrant again relocated at the westerly end of the cul-de-sac in his review. Interestingly enough, I didn't catch that until now, but that is in there as well. Very bottom of his comments there. He says in comment three on drawing sheet C500, the following corrections additions must be considered. Again, he's, he's wanting some more indicators of how the cul-de-sac will, will sheet the water off and how it will run or it will go and then how the detention basin will operate. To the point where he says, added detention basin certification, the detention basin shall be surveyed by the design engineer, certified in writing that the constricted capacity meets design specifications. Looks like he wants that exact language. Item four on drawing sheet 600, the following corrections additions must be considered. This is more specific to some of the improvements that are showing in cross section on the drawing, the things that he would like to see improved in meeting standards of the city or the standards of the infrastructure that's being put on site, whether it's the road itself, the pipe configuration, the fire hydrant, et cetera. So he's shown that there. Item five on drawing sheet 700, the following corrections additions must be made. Again, more of the same types of comments, a little bit about watering during and street lighting. And then it would be best to follow standard engineering practices in both plan view and profile view. So a little bit just about how it's shown. On sheet 701, the following correction additions, again, some of the same things with correct the location of the gate valve on the fire hydrant stub. Valve should be shown at the main line connection tee. He notes on drawing sheet DT100, the following corrections additions must be shown, considered. These are the actual little cross sections for the, the detention basin orifice where the detention basin comes out and goes, or comes in and goes out and how that's shown. And then some of the other things about the, the catch boxes and the, the concrete design, et cetera, on that one. And then under stormwater concerns, he says a maintenance check schedule or maintenance schedule, maintenance plan will need to be prepared and included with the site improvement drawings, which is that document that they had prepared for Sean and recorded with the plat. Some of the same comments as before about the key in the drawing explaining was meant by SD Pro and, and some numbers and other items that are shown as callouts, but not a good explanation of what they are. Then the various pipes will need the strength class called out in the various drawings. So those are his comments. I know there's a lot here, but that's the, the bulk of it. And then you can see the application, the payment. And then there's a response from the engineering group. I'm sorry that I'm scrolling through this so fast. If you want to look at those in particular, have questions, feel free to bring those up. I just want to get to one final thing. Looks like that might've got posted twice. It's okay. Go past it here. There is a letter from Hugh Park wherein he references the water table. He just says, in regard to the requirement to address the high water table in the said subdivision, we are planning on either slab-on-grade homes or crawl spaces. Should not have any issues with water. There are any homes that have basements, they must meet their requirements the geotechnical report filed with the city. The type of basements you would see are not very much subgrade. It might be a foot with like a day basement or two feet, you know, kind of part of the foundation. Probably see something like that if they do want basements, but more of the elevated basement concept, if that was the case. And then you have here, obviously the subdivision. And here, it's a little more visible. So there's the subdivision for everybody's sake. If you get any questions in particular. And then beyond that's construction drawing. So just for the sake of turning it back over to the group, I'll leave it at that for now. See here. I'm gonna stop sharing on this one. If you want me to bring some up, let me know and I can reshare it. And I'll turn it back over to, oops, turn it back over to the planning commission and let you go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments, questions, concerns?
I have a comment. On the north first lot, it has what they call a partial A. What is a partial A?
Let me look at that, but I suspect that's the detention basin. That's what I'm thinking that probably is. So let me real quick pull that up. Yes, that's the detention basin for the, for the stormwater.
The next question is, who maintains that? The property is quite a large little piece of property. Who makes sure the grass is growing properly and water property? Who does that?
Well, it'll be a, it'll be a detention basin with detention basin features. It'll be a small landscape system. If you look at some of the other newer subdivisions in the community like Coleman Farms or over Mitchell Farms there behind Kia, you'll see some of these basins. They're usually grassed over and they might have a bottom that's a little bit hard surface or hard and, and then gravel, something like that. Or they'll just be all outright grass. Those are typically part of that stormwater maintenance plan and program that Mr. Douglas and the engineer asked for. They're recorded with the property. For the purposes of, of maintenance in both Mitchell Farms and Coleman Farms, they were, they were set to be maintained by the HOA, the homeowners association that was established in both of those subdivisions. And that was part of the plan that was submitted to Sean Douglas that they would maintain that.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
I second it.
Haven't made the motion yet.
I didn't hear you make one.
I'd like to make a motion. We forward to the city council with a favorable recommendation on the Old Mill subdivision with the conditions of addressing the items by city staff and city engineer.
Is that a, or is that a motion to have that required before going to the city council?
Prior to.
Okay. I just wanted clarification for staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Action item number two, consideration of amended small subdivision plat approval of Riverdale Center 5 subdivision property located 4035 to 4079 South Riverdale, Riverdale, Utah 84405, requested by Anderson Wallen and Associates. Mike?
Thank you. I just wanted to note real quick, Hugh, you're welcome to stay on if you'd like, but if you're, if you're comfortable, you can, you can leave or, or anything else.
Oh, I'd love to stay here all night long.
You're, you're welcome to leave or you can stay and join us. I'm not telling you have to go, but you recovered your material. So thank you for being here with us.
Thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it and I'll leave you guys at your hard work. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Hugh.
Bye.
Bye. All right. I'm gonna do it like I did last time and share with.
Do you want me to do a roll call on all the action items just to be safe? Or do you not?
I didn't, I didn't want to strongly require it, but I think that last one you got more or less a roll call. But yeah, if we could do a roll call for the sake of, especially when they're subdivisions, that would be good.
Okay. So I'll, do you want me to wait till you're done with this one and then we can do it on both?
Yeah, let's, we'll just take this last one as a roll call that they all said yes with the motion. Yeah, but going forward on the others, let's do a roll call just so it's a little cleaner. If that's okay, it's on commissioners. I'll go forward then and share my screen and we'll move on. All right, let's get this one up. Hey, so, actually I'm gonna go back to here. Bear with me, I'm gonna give you some vertigo for a second. All right. Okay. So the applicant on this one is Anderson Wallen and Associates Eek and also CCA, or sometimes known as the Cornwaster Group or frequently known as the Cornwaster Group. They're represented on the application by David Hamilton and Jake Tate. Jake Tate has joined us. He is, he is with us. So he's available for questions at the conclusion of this action item as well as action item number three with any comments or questions you may have. They have applied for the small subdivision plat review and approval for Riverdale Center 5 subdivision as located at approximately 4035 to 4079 South Riverdale Road in the regional commercial C3 zone. That's a range because it's, it's multiple existing businesses that are located on two lots that we're now looking to make three lots. Or, excuse me, five lots. I apologize. There's no public hearing requirement for this. However, being that it is a small amended subdivision, technically the plat. technically, the planning commission can make an approval of that tonight as one portion of their motion and then a recommendation to city council. Based upon that recommendation to city council, you can make city council as is, city council recommendation with additional requirements or criteria tied to staff. You could also table the item if it were warranted or not, approve the amended plat. It's kind of at your discretion. So there's even a way where you could approve it and table the recommendation to city council if it were warranted, as far as the planning commission feeling it's appropriate but wanting to bring it back if that was required. That being said, the petitioner in this case in the county records is Riverdale Center North. Lots are currently fully developed with the building, got staffing services using it, hearing aid company in it, and Siegel Book is the one lot. And then the other lot has the Olive Garden and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and adjacent commercial properties on that. And actually misspoke, I think I said, no, I was right. I think my paragraph here, as far as guidance, second statement of the second paragraph is wrong in ordinance deadline. I should say two lots into five. So my apologies there. At any rate, this property was acquired from the Boyer Group. And we do have staff comments below. The general plan used for the property is currently set as planned commercial high and this Pearl's project is neutral in that it doesn't change anything to do with the land use other than it's creating more legal lots or just attempting to create legal lots. More of my review comments, which are only a few, I'll just note what I have highlighted under the project name and address. There's an error noted on Lot 5, business for 4113 Riverdale Road. It's referencing a business that's not in this commercial area. Business should that, or that address, I believe, should be Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. That's an easy change, but just a small thing. The property owner's, oh, I don't know if that was, if Rich wanted to do that or not. The property owner's name is CCA Cornwasser, but their address and phone number is not provided on the plat. And it's the developer's name, address, and phone number are not provided on the plat. And then the approving agency's name and address is not shown on the plat. Typically, we like to see those things just so when it's recorded, it's very clear of who the controlling property owner is and who the reviewing agency was of that approval. Scrolling down under licensed land surveyor's name, address, and phone. Signature is not yet provided, but seal is shown. That would be anticipated with the plat. Again, it's just another one of those things to make sure that that happens. See if there's anything specifically here. There is a statement about geotechnical report. You can read all of that. I'm not going to read it at length. It's just that there's some discussion of whether or not it was even necessary in light of these buildings already being existing. Typically, you have a geotechnical report establishing the soils for a future building. In this case, the building is already in place. So I defer to the engineer if the engineer felt like he needed that or wanted that. I mean, clearly, if there is any future amendment to a building that was large enough to require a geotechnical building official to require that at that point. So that wasn't initially provided and I don't believe the engineer has stressed in needing that. So under water right transfer documentation, I just put that need discussed with public works whether or not water transfer is required. I don't think it is, but when I look at the code, the code's a little bit gray with what's going on here. So I would leave that to the public works director to identify if that's required or not. Under departmental staff reports, Mr. Douglas, our city public works director, his only comment is, "My only concern with these is that the applicant ensures that current and future owners are legally bound to maintain the utilities in the subdivision, including water, sewer, and stormwater." This is a title request responsibility. We did get a property title report from the applicants wherein they showed how those properties will still maintain those, utility locations and the maintenance of those. As well as my understanding from talking to Jake Tate is that the engineering group will update the plat drawing to reflect a note that states as much that those utilities will be maintained and shared and no one can block the use of those or make that use, you know, somehow limited to any business owner or lot owner in the future, should there be more than one owner of these properties. The police department said no concerns, fire chief said no concerns. There's only one other comment from the building official wherein he says, "Mike, if they changed the lot line between Lot 1 and Lot 5, they would need to provide a two-hour fire rated wall." It doesn't say that, but that's what he's talking about, a two-hour fire rated wall on both buildings and separate utilities. So that's his concern. I know he's talked a little bit with the applicant today. He's still concerned about it. He did tell me that that is something that he wants to stress needs to happen. If the building is split with a lot line, there needs to be a fire out, fire rated wall, two-hour fire rated wall to justify that split in order to protect both structures. Moving on to the engineer's comments. There's just a few flat comments on two pages here. Again, some simple things, month of the year should be placed on the subdivision title. In the owner's dedication, second line reference, the subdivision, the street should be removed. And they give some guidance there. Name of the owner sign the plat should be printed on signature line. Some bearing direction comments. Cross-axis easement declaration should be considered for all lots to maintain the right of passage presently held, which is also part of that note, that note will have in there. My understanding is it will also reference access for the roadways. Cross-axis shared use, you know, they'll be on multiple lots as part of that utility note. Rideaway width, 300 West Street should be shown. Property owner's name on Lot 5 should be checked for accuracy, which is probably what I noted. A note on RC Willie Home Furnishing parcel building approaches over the existing parcel line by 2.3 feet. This building all overlap should be corrected. I know the applicant's group is aware of that and they're working on that. And clearly, I'll let Mr. Tate talk to that, or if you have questions for him about that, you can bring that up. Item eight, there is a note, television, telephone, excuse me, transmission easement per book is the leader correctly shown. Nine, in the narrative, it states four lots, should be called as five lots. And then 10, the utility legend symbol for a cash box is shown different in this all circle and see beyond the drawing. So that's the bulk of his comments. You see the application from the applicant hereafter, the fee paid. And then it took a minute to load it. Let me make that smaller so it's visible. In case you want to talk, whoops, wrong direction. If it will let me, it's, it. You know what? I'm just going to go this route. And then I'll defer back to the group with any questions or comments you might have for me.
Any questions or comments?
Question for Mike. Hey, you said part of this will be approved by us tonight and then the other part will go to the city council. What part goes to the city council?
You'd make a recommendation to city council. It's kind of like you're doing a preliminary and a recommendation to city council at the same time because of it being a small subdivision.
Do we have to state what part or anything, just?
No, you could just make an approval if you feel comfortable with it and then make a recommendation to city council as part of the same motion.
All right, thanks.
I guess I just want to know, what are they going to do on these lots? What are we building?
Jake, would you like to at least comment on the developer's interest for this property?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me? Is my microphone working?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So they aren't actually building anything. They have an opportunity to separate these properties and I believe one or two are under contract to be sold to another party. So there's no construction, there's no earthwork, anything going on. It's more a transactional nature to transition ownership.
Does that help, Wanda?
So these are all, these are all existing buildings?
That's correct. They're all existing.
Okay. And you're just separating them for sales or possible sales?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm going to stop sharing this.
Guess I'd like to make a motion.
Rob, you're muted. Are you still wanting to make that motion? There you go.
Yes, I'm going my other pace, sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we, sorry, got to make a bigger. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the small subdivision plat approval of Riverdale Center 5 subdivision property located approximately 4035, 4079 South Riverdale, Utah, contingent upon satisfactory completion of city and staff requirements. Does that make sense?
And then do you want to include a motion of recommendation to city council as part of that?
Yes, and I would also like to include a motion of recommendation to city council after city and staff requirements are satisfied.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Just, hang on, just for clarity of the motion, it'd be a recommendation for city council approval, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Shaylee, do you want to hold the commission?
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Knight?
Aye.
Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner Demar?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wingfield?
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Right. The motion has passed. Do we want to go back and have you hold the council on action item one?
We can. Do you want me to?
Wanted to do what you thought was best, Mike?
It would probably be stronger just to get that on the record. I mean, you kind of already did when you all said aye, but just for the sake of the record, it may not hurt.
All right.
Give me aye.
There you go. Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner Demar?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Sorry, did you say? I missed it.
I did, but yes.
Commissioner Wingfield?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Shaylee. Action item number three, consideration of amended small subdivision plat approval of Riverdale Center Lot, Riverdale Center 2, Lot 3, amended subdivision property located approximately 4125 South Riverdale, Utah, 84405, requested by Anderson Wallen and Associates, Inc. Defering Mike Eggit.
Great. I'll hop into this one same way, get this final one going. All right, there we go. All right, so yeah, CCA Cornwasser Group, also known as Cornwasser Group. They're represented by the petitioner, which is Anderson Wallen and Associates, Inc. And the applicants on this were David Hamilton and Jake Tate. Jake Tate is with us again for this item as he was for item two. This is also an amended small subdivision plat. This one's actually titled Riverdale Center 2, Lot 3 amended subdivision. That's what it is called. So that even captures that a little more clearly on this one. Location is approximately 4125 South Riverdale Road, which is in the center of the lot that we're talking about in the retail commercial park overlay RCP zone, which is a development agreement overlay that was established between Boyer and the city when this was first built as the Lowe's project, Lowe's Hardware Area Project. This request is not, and it has no conflicts with the RCP overlay zone agreement. It's completely in compliance with that, so there's no issue there. There is no public hearing requirement for that. And again, this one, because it is an amended small subdivision and roads traverse it, it's under 10 lots by our city code. It technically can have an approval from the planning commission and a recommendation to city council this evening of the amended plat. Amended small subdivision plat. And you can make a recommendation to approve, approve with additional requirements, criteria table or not approve the amended plat as submitted and not recommend to city council, again, with appropriate findings of fact. Should this move forward to the city council, it would be set for a future date based upon whatever motion was made by the planning commission at the unavailable city council meeting. I think the applicants would hope sometime in early May if possible, or at least in the month of May, as quickly as can be done. That being said, the petitioner's properties, again, are owned by Riverdale Center North LLC. There's multiple buildings, three buildings on one lot. They'd like to separate that into three lots, one for each building on this project. This project was previously owned by Boyer, if I didn't know that in this one. The general plan used for the property is also set as planned commercial high. And again, this one is neutral in that it's just a subdivision and doesn't change the existing uses on this property. Going down to my comments, you're going to see they're similar to the last one relative to the address and phone number on the plat for the property owner developer in the city as the approving agency. Again, the survey or signature being provided at a later date. Let's see here, water right transfer note. And that's it for me. Again, same comments from Mr. Douglas wherein he says that he just wants to make sure the applicant ensures that current future owners are legally bound to maintain the utilities in the subdivision, including water, sewer, and stormwater, and also roads, because we saw our city engineer note that in the last one. I'm sure that would be the comments on this one. Fire department, there's a little bit different comment from the fire chief. He just says, "We are good on the fire department side. We already have the protection pieces in place in the area. So the deal's good there." And then no other comments provided from anybody. Moving down to the city engineer, again, similar comments, about month and year showing on subdivision title. Some of the same comments from the last one, or under owner's dedication. Point of beginning notation is missing. Therefore, bearing in distance along the property lines is missing. Boundary description note, just for some things that need to be updated for the city engineer. The cross-axis easement declaration should be considered for all lots to maintain the right of passage presently held, which, again, as I noted, I believe that that's the intent for there to be a note that reflects that, not only for this, but all of the sewer, storm, and water utilities, as well as the maintenance of said utilities and cross-axis road use. A rideaway width of 300 West and Pacific Avenue showing in full. And then the leader from the curb data for the curb on 300 West is drawn to the centerline curve instead of its boundary curve. So again, just a notation there on the survey itself. You see the applicant's application. Signature, it's in your packet, the payments that's been made on this one. And then if it will let me load it, but I'm going to go to the other screen. And then there's the subdivision plat itself. So that's all we have on that one. And again, I would defer to the planning commission for any questions of me and/or the applicant.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one question. Is this same type of subdivision as the last one where it's just existing properties and they're splitting them up into separate individual properties or?
Yes, it is. It's the exact same type of a project as we just did on the second item. Yes.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Uh huh, yep.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a motion.
Oh, who, your microphone's not working. Who's?
Okay, somebody else can do it then.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the amended subdivision proposal for Riverdale Center Lot 3. And that we recommend, also move that we recommend to the city council that this be forwarded to the city council for their approval once all staff recommendations have been completed.
And the city engineer.
And the city engineer.
And just a point of clarification, Riverdale Center 2, Lot 3, correct? Okay, perfect.
Shaylee, do you want to pull the commission?
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Knight?
Aye.
Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner Demond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
And Commissioner Winfield?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any, because we're doing this live streaming, have we had any public comments or questions?
I haven't received any emails, and I just checked the YouTube page and there's no comments on there either. Have you received any texts, Rich?
I haven't received any texts either.
Any discretionary items?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Rich, Shaylee, and Mike for getting this all set up, and Mike, I mean, Rich for being on the side that he is handling the public comments if any came through.
I was going to say that same thing. Thank you, Bar. Thank you, guys, all for what you do for all of us.
Happy to help. The days we live in, right? Figuring this out.
Yeah, for the first one, it went pretty good.
Well, good. Let's hope it's going this way.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good to see everybody. Have a good night.
Wait one second on that one, you guys. So Jones?
I believe it was Rob.
Rob? Okay, thank you.
You guys all stay healthy and well.
You guys too.
Yeah. Thanks, you guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.